So, I'm... Councillors, are there any of you wishing to make an acknowledgement? councillor law.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just like to congratulate Declan Kelty from the Moe Footy Club, who played his first AFL game with Melbourne on the weekend, and actually had to win the Ds. Thank you.
Okay. Any other councillor? Councillor Harry Mender.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I'd just like to acknowledge two female basketballers from Latrobe City, Emerson Devine and Jade Melbourne, who both competed with Country Victoria and took out a bronze medal at the recent national championships. And also highlight that Jade has been accepted or is now off to Canberra to study with the AIS. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Any other recognition councillors? If not, we'll move on to public question time. Now, we have a list of questions, which is fairly extensive. If I hand over to you, Mr CEO, you'll have the list there, and perhaps you could read out the questions and the response.
I do, Mr Mayor. So, there are six questions. Firstly, the first two questions are from Marie Chapman. I'm just wondering if Marie is in the audience tonight? She is. Thank you. So, in accordance with our local law, if the person is in the meeting, it'll be read out. So, sorry, is that Marie there? No? So, if Marie isn't in attendance, the questions will be tabled and put into our council report. So... Oh, she is. Sorry. She is. Thanks, Marie. I will read out the questions then, so I was just, wasn't sure if it was you. So, the two questions, I'll read them out. "Could council please arrange for a pedestrian ramp to be added to the curb at the Mark Pedestrian Area on Matthew Crescent, Trelgan, opposite the senior citizens area, approximately 20 metres from the corner adjacent to the ambulance parking zone?" And the second question, "Could council please look into the bus access to the Moor Railways Station car park, with a view to making changes to ensure that buses do not bottom out when entering the car park?" So, we'll have to raise a customer request for the relevant team within council to investigate, to provide a direct response to Mrs Chapman on those. And a copy of that response will be provided to council. Council's meeting procedure, local law, provides that such questions be directed internally to the organisation rather than be presented at a council meeting. The next two... No, next question, sorry, is from Diane Walker. Is Diane in attendance? Thanks, Diane. So, the topic Diane's question is consideration of planning panel recommendations for amendment C105 to the Latrobe Planning Scheme, Live Work Latrobe. And the question is, "Did council receive the panel report on amendment C105 in the set times for preparing panel reports specified under Ministerial Direction 15?" So, in response to that, under ministerial direction number 15, the planning scheme amendment process, a panel report must, a panel, sorry, must submit its report to the planning authority within 40 business days for a panel with three or more persons. The number of days commenced once council submitted all its documentation, which was the 3rd of December 2018. However, the minister may exempt an amendment from the need to comply with one or more of the requirements of the direction. The circumstances in which an exemption may be appropriate include, "The amendment is initiated by a council for a significant strategic matter, for example, to implement a policy review, and specific parties, for example, land and business owners, would not be disadvantaged by a longer processing time, where public interest would be served by providing more time to complete a step." So, the panel report was received by council on the 15th of March, which was beyond the 40 business day timeframe, and it would be a requirement for the planning panel to request an exemption at an accordance with ministerial direction 15. The next question is from Robert Walker, who I assume is, yes, Robert's in the audience? No, sorry. Yes, the next, the fourth question. So, the topic is related to the same matter, incorrect name zone. So, at the council meeting, the question is, "On CM505, on 21st of August 2017, when council endorsed the strategy that included the incorrect name Jerolang, were any or all councils aware that the strategic planners were intending to rezone Yunnar South?" So, in response to that, councils were aware of the proposed zoning changes in Yunnar South. "The draft land use strategy at the 21st of August 2017 council meeting was endorsed to release to the community by public exhibition through a planning scheme amendment. Page 68 of the report did contain an error, which referred to Jerolang instead of Yunnar South. However, the map on page 69 indicated Yunnar South precinct as the area to be rezoned. As part of the submission process of amendment C105, this area was identified and considered at the 3rd of September council meeting 2018." Changes to the strategy to rectify the area were presented to the planning panel in November and December 2018. The panel considered this as part of making any recommendations regarding the amendment, in which they supported the proposed changes. Page six of attachment two, list of post-exhibition changes in tonight's agenda, details that properties with limited or no further subdivision opportunity are to remain within a rural living zone in Yunnar South. And the fifth question is from Merv Gettis. Is Merv in attendance tonight? Haven't seen him, so we'll table that question in the minutes. And the last question is from Christine Sint. Is Christine in attendance? No. So, that question will also be tabled in our minutes of the council meeting. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr CEO. At this point, I note that your laptop covering the minutes has failed. Councillor O'Callaghan.
The wifi-enabled Frisbee has failed yet again.
Has failed yet again. Do you have enough paperwork to compensate?
We're going to make it up as we go along, Mr Mayor. It should be good.
Even better, even better. Right, we'll now move on to speakers. We have four, six, eight, ten, 11 speakers wishing to speak on matters that are raised in the agenda. Speakers, as they call you out, if you come to the podium, you'll be given three minutes to address council, and then I'll ask that you stay there for a moment or two in case councillors have questions of you. So, the first person to speak is Sue Hodges, speaking on item 10.1, Moorwell Power Plant Heritage Interpretation Plan.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me to speak today. I'm just speaking on behalf of supporting the Heritage Interpretation Plan. It's undertaken by my company, SHP, as a permit condition from Heritage Victoria. It was completely separate from the demolition permit from the Moorwell Power Station. And the idea is that it was a plan communicates the value of Moorwell's history to the public and to residents of Moorwell. It comprises an analysis of tourism, particularly a proposal to build a large $100 million museum, and I'm a specialist and advisor to UNESCO in some areas of this. And because the plan doesn't consider that to be feasible, we looked at the other formats that history could take in Moorwell, and we interviewed, as part of our method, many residents. We conducted some filmed histories, and we interviewed everyone who agreed to be interviewed. So, the method is a standard public history one. It was peer-reviewed, but we also sought a lot of input from residents during the process, and from council and other key stakeholders. It reflects international best practice in the same method that this plan uses. SHP also did a plan for Lemos in Greece, which has just been granted $500,000 worth of funding, using the same method from the federal government. So, it's understood to be best practice. Some of the plan looks at what I call contested history. There were very different opinions in this area about whether the power station should be saved, about whether it should be demolished, about whether the history was one to proud working class history, or was it also one of loss through issues such as asbestos. And the method I've adopted is something that I've actually worked on with UNESCO in a report called Reports on Sites of Memory. So, we looked at both sides and didn't actually make a judgment. That's why one of the signs is called "Fight for the Power Station". So, we've tried to allow the different voices to speak throughout this suite of interpretation. And some of the kaputts, as the minutes say, signage, a podcast, filmed interviews, two sculptures, one which commemorates the illness... sculptures, one which commemorates the illness and death due to asbestos, and the other one commemorates the proud working history of this area. So, you see again this duality of the contested history. And we also looked at how this plan might generate jobs in the longer term for this region, so we're very mindful of the need to make the best of the history economically as well. And the plan also in turn includes some proposals of signage to be installed on the south side of Prince's Drive, near the Moorwell-Trelgan Road intersection. So, I think that's my three minutes, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillors, any questions for Sue? councillor White?
I was just, thank you, Sue, I was just interested to understand a bit more in terms of explanation in relation to your theme, the playground.
Yes, yep. Well, that was just one idea that we presented to council, and the people here said that that might be undertaken in the future, when there's a revision of the public lands and parks scheme for Moorwell, I hope I've got that right. So, the idea was to theme a playground around the power station, it could be Moorwell as well as maybe Hazelwood, but that's quite popular, and to create essentially a destination attraction with that idea, as well as a revitalization of Power Works, and we work quite closely with Power Works on that as well. So, all of the recommendations, or most, come from consultation with the community, with those members who agreed to consult with us.
Any other questions, councillors? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I call the next speaker, I should point out that I have omitted to welcome the members of the Latrobe City Youth Council, sitting in the back in the gallery there, seeing their first council meeting. Let's see how long it takes before they nod off. Right, we're going to item 14.1, the speaker is Robert Walker. 14.1 is consideration of planning panel recommendations for amendment C105 to the Latrobe Planning Scheme, which is entitled Live Work Latrobe. Robert, as I pointed out, you have three minutes, and then if you'd remain there for questions.
Mr Mayor and councillors, we began subdividing our property with the expectation all lots would be available for use as rural living. There is still a five-lot re-subdivision underway. Council proposed to rezone all our property to FZ2, and then revert four of the five lots back to RLZ at certification. We have no guarantee that this will happen, and at what cost to us? Council staff is assured as FZ2 will still allow a dwelling not associated with agriculture. I question the likelihood of this due to policy, they have not provided this assurance in writing. This lot is too small for any viable agriculture, and isolated from our remaining parcel by a road. Its best use in the future would be rural living. It is compatible with already established development patterns for this locality. There are the lots in this precinct of the same size, and they are not being backzoned. We were prepared to concede our main 17 hectare parcel to FZ2, but we don't see we should concede on any of the lots in the parcel being re-subdivided. Loss of asset value will have an impact on our future. In zoning map 122, within this C105 presented to council, I note two of our lots have been removed. This makes the parcel look larger and have less slots than it actually has. Why do they need to alter, this is a government map, why do they need to alter this map for greater effect? Is this the actions of an open and accountable council? This type of behaviour has been noted previously, and should not be necessary. Policy should be all that is required to present as reason. Prior to Easter, I was informed lot 9C would be marked as rural's living zone. This has not been shown on this map. In being fair, our small lots should have automatically been included when all other small lots were changed back to RLZ. Just because we have a few lots was no reason to exclude them. Each of these lots have their own registered title, and are just as legitimate as the other small lots surrounding us. We have been unfairly targeted and discriminated against, and they're deliberately going to be creating conflicting land use, and that will create problems for the council in the future. Thank you.
Mr Walker, before you take questions from the councillors, could you just re-summarise your concerns, please? It is about how many lots of land?
Because we've only got three minutes, I've had to cut it down, and I thought I'll do that, and then you can ask questions and say, use your time.
I'm asking the first question.
Now, so, repeat that question, please.
Well, can you just summarise very quickly what your, you covered a lot of ground, as I expected you would, but your main concern is that three, or was it five lots of land not being rezoned?
Our property had eight titles in two sides of the road, cut through the by road. We are rezoning one side of the road into five separate lots, it's not a new subdivision, it's just re-subdividing lots. They have said that because of the rezoning, that they will allow four of the lots to be reverted to rural living zone, but one lot in the middle, that's a larger lot, they are saying that that must stay farm zone two, for whatever reason, I know the reason why, and they refuse to allow that to go. But, that property, for the future, our intent in the future, if that property is not rezoned to rural living zone, that means therefore that we've got virtually no chance of selling that to a potential buyer, because finance, zoning laws, they won't be allowed to build on unless it's associated with agriculture, it's a 16 hectare lot. The average size of a beef property in Victoria is 340 hectares, what are you going to do with 16 hectares? So, in my way of logical thinking, a 16 hectare lot is only a largish rural living lot, which the consultation report showed there was a desire for that in the community.
Okay, I think we understand that now, but when we get to the actual item on the agenda, I might get the officers to talk to the concerns you've raised. Okay, councillors, don't go away. Councillors, any questions for Mr Walker? councillor White?
Just to clarify, Rob, my understanding is that you've applied for and got a planning permit for five of the five lots, right?
Correct, yes.
It's been approved by the council?
Correct.
And, but you're going through a process at the moment?
Correct, yes.
In terms of getting titles with those, is that right?
Correct.
So, in that regard, I think that's all I need to know. Thank you.
I'll turn that on. Our next speaker is, again, on item 14.1, consideration of planning panel recommendations for amendment C105, and the speaker is Diane Walker.
Thank you. Mr Mayor and councillors and CEO, words and terms that are not defined by the planning scheme or legislation take their ordinary meaning. Imprecise drafting leads to amendments being misunderstood or misinterpreted, which can lead to further action before VCAT and the courts. The Latrobe City Council have acknowledged that where Geraldang is referred to, not Yunnar South, is a typographical error. This error has proposed to be corrected as post-exhibition change. Our legal advice is that this is not a typographical error. Amendment documents were not peer-reviewed for accuracy, typographical errors, consistency between the maps and documents, and correct naming conventions. It is inappropriate that such an important rezoning be incorporated into a wider amendment without proper considerations of the merits of the rezoning. No rural living study was conducted. The backzoning of land was not a Latrobe City initiative for the whole municipality, just a targeted group at Yunnar South. The reason Yunnar South was backzoned is because on HVP logging route. In our case, the Timber Hallage route was changed to go through an existing rural living zone. Council meeting 521, agenda item amendment C105, the sponsor of that project is General Managers City Development. In that meeting, the General Managers City Development declared an indirect interest. As a sponsor of amendment C105, one could not distance himself from the amendment, no matter who provides the information to councillors, or who is managing the supervision of divisional control. Being sponsor is arguably a conflict of interest in itself. Fairness is a concept we can all readily understand, and we as humans can recognize unfair. Fairness means doing what's right. I would ask each councillor present tonight to consider if there has been fairness in this process, with the Latrobe City staff member saying, it has only been looked at simply, and mistakes may have been made when questioned about proposed change at Yunnar South. Information given tonight and submissions made to council clearly show mistakes have been made, and that the proposed resolution should not be passed without further amendment. Our lawyers in Melbourne are of the view that this matter can be resolved in regard to our concerns, and that you could consider the following information and the resolution framed by them. We have an accrued right to subdivide the land into parcels consistent with RLZ4. A future corrections amendment would result in an unnecessary administrative burden for council. I've got just the resolution that they've drafted, if I may?
Finished.
That councillor men table one of attachment two, post-exhibition changes to include, show all lots, the subject of planning permit 2018-264, to be retained as rural living zone schedule two on map 122. I do have a copy of that proposed resolution for all councillors, if you would like to look at that.
If one of the officers could collect that, please, and we'll pass it around. All right, Mr Walker. Councillors, any questions for Mrs Walker? No questions? On that basis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, again, is on consideration of planning panel recommendations for amendment C105, and the speaker is Chris Madston. Chris, are you there?
Thanks for letting me speak. I'm going to talk particularly on the proposed changes to farming zone two in Coligny. I fully support the proposed changes and the application of farm zone two to a wide range of properties in the Coligny area. I believe I speak on behalf of the wider Coligny community, there have been numerous responses supporting this to council throughout the consultation process, and a lot of people I talk to in Coligny are actually well in support of this change of farm zone two. Just by way of background, for many years, numerous landowners in Coligny have actually been stopped from building on their property, and the amendment's going to provide them with significant certainty and allow them to build, and our community to grow. Numerous cases have been taken to VCAT, wasting significant council resources and dollars, and at significant financial and emotional cost to landowners. Therefore, that's why I'm proposing that councillors vote in support of this amendment, and I'd also like to recommend that council move a motion to thank council staff in the planning department for their efforts in developing this amendment and getting it up and going. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, if you could just hang there for a second. Any questions for Chris?
No, okay, thank you.
Our next speaker, again, on 14.1, consideration of planning panel recommendations for amendment C105, Tara Kinsman. Now, Tara, I understand that you're representing a company, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the company is?
Sabelco Lime.
Sabelco Lime in Trelgan. Right. The floor is yours.
Mr Mayor, councillors and officers, thank you for the opportunity to present on behalf of Sabelco Lime. My name is Tara Kinsman, I am the operations manager for Sabelco's lime manufacturing facility located at 28 Jeanette Street in Trelgan. I'm accompanied by our planning consultant, Mr Jack Cram. This plant has operated since the 1950s. It is a regionally significant industry. It operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is the only high-quality lime manufacturing plant in Victoria, supplying many diverse industries such as APM, agriculture and construction. The Bucken Quarry supplies our raw limestone. It has an approved reserve for 31 years, and with more than 100 years' resource life. The plant has an excellent environmental performance record, with very few complaints. It needs an environmental buffer surrounding it to mitigate any potential dust and noise impacts arising from upset conditions. It is very important for both Sabelco and the community to maintain existing buffers. Sabelco strongly opposed the exhibited provisions in amendment C105 that promote the transition of the Sabelco site and environs to residential uses. These are unrealistic, threaten continued operations, and do not provide a net community benefit. This position has been supported by the ministerial panel's conclusions and recommendations. The panel has recommended council change the planning scheme and supporting strategies to support the ongoing operation of Sabelco, and abandon strategies to transition the area. Sabelco respectfully requests council to adopt the panel's recommendations regarding the Jeanette Street Industrial Precinct. The plant and quarry currently employ 25 persons and generate some 150 indirect jobs. Sabelco paid $1.92 million in local wages in 2017. Planning approval has been granted for a $28 million capital works programme facilitating the increased environmental performance, production and increased employment to 32 direct and 180 indirect jobs. Direct local wages will increase to about $2.47 million. Sabelco spends some $10 million on mostly local supplies and trades. Most products are sold locally, and the closest alternate supply is 710 kilometres away at Galong in New South Wales. This has significant transport cost implications. Residential encroachment closer to the plant will result in high exposure to dust and noise emissions for new residents. This may make operations untenable and force Sabelco to close. Relocation costs are estimated at $131 million. These costs can't be justified, and production is likely to move interstate. This would result in significant economic impacts for Latrobe through lost direct and indirect employment, wages and business expenditure. Thank you. Jack and I are happy to take any questions.
Okay, can I start with the first question? You've seen the recommendation in the agenda, are you comfortable with that? Or is your company comfortable with that?
Yes, I'll just, yes, we are.
Okay. Councillors, any questions? councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Tara. Just a clarification, how many jobs did you say with the expansion?
So, it would increase from 25, that's both at the Bucken and Trelgan site, to 32. So, we, yeah, seven jobs.
Any other questions? councillor Harryman?
Yep. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just quickly, with the buffer, it's obviously a 500 metre circle, are you happy for some adjustment at the edges of that? Just looking, does it need to be a complete circle, or is there room that if it went in 20, 50 metres on an edge or two here?
No, we, well, our stance is we don't really support any further encroachment in what we already have, so.
That's fine, that's all on it.
That's where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Councillors, any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, again, on amendment C105, is Mr Colin Gooding. Mr Gooding, before you start, just so that we can get an understanding of where you're coming from, I believe you live near Sabelco, is that correct?
No, we have a parcel of land.
Ah, same thing, fair enough, yeah. All right, go for it.
Mr Mayor, councillor and CEO, my name is Colin Gooding, and I'm a principal owner of First National Real Estate Latrobe and Trelgan. We have an interest in Latrobe Planning Scheme 105 as the owner of lot two, Dunbar Road, the scheme in which we support. This 13 hectare, 32 acre parcel of land is on the edge of the 500 metre buffer required by the Sabelco facility. We would like to work with the planning department, so some design measures can be put into place as we apply for rezoning of this parcel. This unique subdivision would create further choices for buyers, and assist in the types of homes that will be in demand for this Clossian Creek location. Secondly, Trelgan is the major regional city for Gippsland for population and services, and the planning for increased growth is on the rise. We have been waiting for a very long time for some long-term growth, and the time has now come, as the heat comes out of the Melbourne and Sydney markets. now come as the heat comes out of the Melbourne and Sydney markets. Our region is now experiencing affordability, which continues house values on the incline due to more buyers and a decrease in sales stock, plus a rental market that is creating a massive demand for rental properties as well. I believe that any real estate practice in our area would be experiencing difficulty in housing residential tenants. As an example, at present, we have some six hundred and sixty residential rental properties with only four properties available as of this morning and I know one of those has eight inspections this afternoon. When a major project like the Energy from Waste at Australian Paper gets closer, this problem will push good tenants away from our region to the inevitable rent increases. Collectively, we need to work on this for our tenants, investors and home occupiers and Maryvale is only one project. The Trobe Regional Hospital is the core of our community with the unique services it provides to the area. We're also very lucky to have this asset but is now assisting some five and a half million baby boomers downsizing and a lot of them coming to our area, which is another number on the rise. Over fifty-five lifestyle villagers, a few, and our aged care facilities will be another major problem as they will not be able to take on the request for the quality of aged care. In closing, I believe the live-work Latrobe project, in particular the housing strategy, positively responds to these aspects, or expected increases I should say, and the change in housing demand to be experienced across Latrobe City. I look forward to any further discussions and the future I believe we, Latrobe City, are very, very good place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions for Mister Gooding?
Thanks Mister Mayor.
Mister Clancy.
Mister Gooding, you just mentioned you've got land joining or abutting these Sabelco plant.
Yes.
One would assume that as Sabelco are asking for a five hundred metre buffer around that you might be standing here saying that you don't support this, yet you stand here and say you do support this and want to work with council to ensure. What plans do you have for that parcel of land?
For quite a unique land subdivision, we've also, it would be a tru- because we've taken on the wetlands some years ago, we removed all the poplars, we got the natives in there, there's a great little billabong down there that we'd look for some form of aged care facility. It's a very unique project, I believe we're just on the edge of the five hundred metre buffer, so one would hope that we could work in with everybody involved to get a very good outcome.
Any other questions, councillors? If not, thank you very much for the good. Our next speaker is in relation to agenda item fourteen point one, we move away from C one O five to fourteen point four, I'm sorry, not fourteen point one, use of land for animal keeping, twelve dogs and development of kennels associated with animal keeping at Tambo Road, Moi South. Speaker Monique Hawkins. Monique here? All right.
Good evening councillors and chairpeople present this evening. Tonight bring us to a discussion about barking dogs and housing animals and animal ethics. I'm representing my mother, my background is actually a qualified veterinary nurse along with studying a bachelor of applied science at university. I'd like to bring a topic which is, you know, very, very, very specific to this permit, the fact that my mum has been breeding French Bulldogs for over forty years and she also shows her dogs. I've also had a strong interest in animals myself, all the animals are vaccinated, she's also a member of the ANKC, that's the Australian National Kennel Club. There's quite a lot of differences between saying that you're a breeder and also saying that, you know, you're an ANKC breeder, I'm not too sure whether there's many people present here this evening, but to sort of be labelled obviously with the, you know, information from neighbours surrounding, you know, my mum's property, you know, an ANKC registered breeder has to uphold a lot of animal standards with their breed that they are breeding. They also have to breed to a certain standard of the size of the animal, they also have to pay membership and also register the dogs, not only with the council but also to pay for registration of puppies and also the dogs also have pedigree papers. These puppies are cared for at the highest level and obviously, you know, regularly checked by veterinarians as well. What we're asking for tonight is to have a look at the proposed proposal for the twelve animals that she is proposing to house. We've gone to lengths and miles to work with Jared within the council and we've followed all instructions by him and also spent a lot of time and effort to try and work with the council closely and what they've also advised. We have had an independent company which was also suggested to us by Jared, which is an acoustic company and they have also submitted, you know, an appraisal back to us and we have submitted this to council. This acoustic company assessment of dog barking noise at six Tambo Road, Moi includes continuous measurement and sound recording at two boundary locations on the property for one week. Analysis of the measurement and playback of the sound recordings indicated the following. The company has come back and also given us a summary again to sort of review again this evening and we asked that you would take into consideration. One various sources contributed to the soundscape including barking from twelve dogs housed on site as well as from other dogs at more distant locations. Other audible noises included lawn mowing, traffic, traffic, bird insect and wind noise.
Have you finished?
Sorry?
Oh, beautifully timed.
Yes.
Councillors, any questions? On that basis, Monique, you're free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is on the same item on the agenda, fourteen point four, use of land for animal keeping, twelve dogs, Raywin Agnew.
Yes, good evening Mayor and councillors, thank you for listening to our points here, points of interest. As Monique commented, I've done this for forty years, never had any problems with neighbours before and no complaints and find it very difficult to sort of, you know, listen to people at false accusations.
I might ask you to pause just there, so you are the actual applicant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry. We've done extensive research on all this, we've done everything that councils told us to do, we've done septic emptied, we've done proposed kennel plans, also adjusted the number of dogs and in this money spent on the acoustic, which has come back as a glowing report that it's not my dogs that are barking and over a week's time it's well under the standard of any standard of Victoria. People have been there to, the lady that came to inspect the property for environmental, health and environmental, she had glowing reports. What else did I have to... Jared's actually been to my property and took photographs and said there was not a lot, no noise there happening. What else do I have? And other officers that the neighbours had said my dogs were barking have turned up and also commented that they're at the wrong place as there was no noise and they were concerned on, did I have dogs there? So I think it's very unfair of people notifying councils, you know, unnecessary. Furthermore, so many businesses in the street, it's not as if I'm running a big kennel property or anything, I'm only asking to have the six bitches that are fertile and there's a lot of other dogs, the other dogs that I have are fifteen and just geriatric dogs anyway. I think that's... And the other thing, just at the end here, I just wanted to make it quite clear that the accusations that these officers come round and people that they'd been, there's not been no other complaints in the last eleven months has gone by and I haven't had any complaints or people come round. That's about all I think I've got to say about this. Thank you.
Beautifully timed.
Thank you very much.
Councillors, any questions? Don't run away.
Yeah, Mister Mayor.
Councillor what?
Just one from me, you mentioned that you've been in this space or doing this managing dogs of this type, did you say forty years?
Yes.
On this site?
Sorry?
On the current, on the location?
No, no.
So where?
No, I was actually in Brisbane.
So I guess my question really then is how long you've been at this particular locality?
Eighteen months, two years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillors, any other questions? If not, thank you. You're free to go.
Thank you.
All right, councillors, we move on, next agenda item of which we have a speaker is fourteen point five, display of electronic cremation sign at one church street in Traugan and the speaker is James Course. Just to assist us, James, are you for or against this proposal?
Are for.
For, okay.
Mister Mayor and councillors, so I'm James Course, as you said, and I'm an owner of Regional Billboard Co, which is the permit application for the digital billboard at one church street in Traugan. So council's planning department have prepared a detailed evaluation report on the application which recommends an approval. I agree with the content of their report and I won't talk further on the planning grounds, however, would happy to field any questions at the end. In addition to council's standard advertising requirements for the application, there was also a lot of media coverage. As a result of this, the application received eight objections. The planning department categorised these into three themes. The first two themes are relative to the planning grounds, which are well covered and rebutted by the planning department in their report. So I'd like to just talk about the final theme, which is road safety. Research has shown that in suitable locations, road safety is not affected by digital billboards. Specifically to this location, council's engineers and vic roads comprehensively evaluated whether the sign would have any impact on road safety, both parties approved the application. So just to finish, I'm going to talk about some of the community benefits of the sign. So like all of our billboards, one stop steal in Morewell will be used for the construction of the sign. We also use media sales direct, who are a Traugan based company, for all of our sales to local businesses. We've already had eight to ten local businesses approach us about advertising on the sign throughout the advertising of it. Of all the content on our billboards, seventy-three percent of all advertising has come from local businesses thus far. We're really excited about how this technology can help local businesses reach traffic on the Princess Highway. We'd also like to talk about potentially including a community notice where ten percent of advertising would be donated to community groups, notices or schools, which would be happy to include a permit condition and would field some sort of system which these offers and things would come in through. So we hope you'll follow the planning department's recommendation of approval so that we can provide outdoor advertising for local businesses in Traugan.
Thanks, just, I'm just looking at the design, the structure of it and the steel work.
Yeah, sure.
And I noticed there was a walkway between, it's like...
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, so I was just wondering, is it freestanding or is it...
Yeah, it's completely freestanding from the wall behind.
Right, that's what I couldn't work out, so thanks very much.
Yeah, sure.
Cheers.
Councillors, any other questions for James? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillors, our next speaker is on item fourteen point six, use and development of land with single dwelling and ancillary outbuilding within the farming zone at one seventy-four Waterloo Road, Moi. First speaker is Sue Abbott.
Hi, good evening councillors, Mayor and Mister CEO. I'm in support of item fourteen point six for the proposed approval for use and development of land for the dwelling. It's really should be, the proposal should be for development because we believe that it should have existing use rights already. The nature of the site is, it has an existing building although currently uninhabitable, has existing power connected to the site, existing septic system, so it would lend itself to be able to retain the occupation and the existing use rights. There's no definitive timelines that present when the inhabitation occurred, so the difference between two years or three years, it's hard to tell, so we believe that it shouldn't be axed just for that undefinitive timeline. Strong favour of this approval is also triggered by the location of the property, it directly abuts general residential zone one on the eastern and the southern boundaries, so two of the major boundaries are fully residential zoned with access to Gippsland water, sewage system and water assets. So we sort of believe if the land was kilometres away from the town's edge and segregated and surrounded by farming land of alight sizes etcetera, then a refusal could be well justified. But this existing land has building sites, septic building materials and would generally no further be reduced by the building being there for the agricultural use of land, by the building being there now, no further more than when we replace the building. So the application was for replacement of a new dwelling from the existing old dwelling and we believe that the capability of agriculture will be no further reduced from the existing now compared to what it would be. Mathematically, the building size represents a three hundred and fifty square metre footprint, so compared to the two hundred and six thousand square metre landmass, it equates to zero point zero zero one seven percent. So put that into an equation of agricultural land use, we don't think that's going to be detrimental to the future use of the land. Also knowing that the existing farming zone applications say that over a hundred acres, and this is about seventy acres, that the proposal could be refused or it needs to be justified, well that should be triggered on each of its merits, not hard and fast, you know, the planning scheme's a grey area, not a black and white area, so every application is deemed on its own merits and we believe this application should be supported deemed on the merits that should have existing use rights. So that's it, happy to take any questions.
Councillors, any questions? councillor Harriman.
Thanks Sue, just how far is the property from existing residential land?
The actual house?
It's approximately metres, just to give an understanding.
Oh, it's probably only fifty or sixty metres from the edge of the general residential zone land and it's actually the closest point to the access roadway, so it's not as if it's in the middle of the large seventy acre land where the rest of it has to be accessed and cut off, it's actually in the closest possible point to where the access driveway is.
Councillor Harriman, would you like to have a go now?
I'll have a go now, yeah, got to let the local councillor get first tips. Thanks, just, did you say it was occupied two to three years ago?
It wasn't occupied, it was used and it was lived in for use of the land.
Yep.
And then there was a fire eighteen months ago within the building, so it hasn't been occupied and been fixed up since then, so it was occupied prior to that.
No worries.
Yes.
Yep, perfect.
Thanks.
Okay, councillors, any other questions? councillor Clancy.
So the proposed new dwelling, how far does that sit from where the current?
Exactly the same place.
Great, thanks.
Any further questions? If not, oh, you have no, certainly.
Not if, sorry, just through you to the CEO, if I could, Mister Mayor, what's the legality with the occupation rates to right to build? If I could ask that.
You can ask that and the procedure is I've then asked the CEO.
That's what I was asking.
Sorry, Mister Mayor, if I might just be able to clarify the question?
Just, I know if a building's suffered fire or damage, how long has it, like if it's been occupied two years ago or five years ago or ten years ago?
Talking about existing rights.
To have an existing rights. Have to have an existing rights. When does that run out or when does it cease to be in this case?
I think, uh, either planning services manager or city development, uh, general manager might be able to assist me with this one.
So we'll subcontract this question?
I will, Mr Mayor, just to be exactly certain on the answer.
Ms Gett, would you like to answer the question? Thank you. Councillors, can I ask, did you all hear that clearly?
It's a new one.
Yeah, that's much better, Gail, thank you.
She could have told me earlier.
Didn't want to break your concentration.
We'll go again. So officers consider that the dwelling does not have existing use rights, as the applicant has not provided sufficient information to demonstrate that continuous use of the dwelling has been occurring for fifteen years, and insufficient evidence has been provided to be satisfied that the building has been used as a dwelling in any recent time. An existing use right expires if either the use has stopped for a continuous period of two years, or has stopped for two or more periods which together total two years over a three year time span.
Thank you. Apologise, Sue, I should have let you go before then, but just in case, are there any other questions from councillors? Thanks, Sue. Our last speaker is on the same item, and the speaker is Stephen Rennets.
Mr Mayor, councillors, officers, thank you for listening to me tonight. Uh, my name is Steve Rennets, I am the, the, um, the owner of this, this property. Uh, just some history, and I'll, I'll try and be as quick as I can. Uh, the property was purchased in July twenty eighteen. Uh, it's twenty-one point oh-six hectare property, part of a larger, um, landholding used for agriculture. It included a modest dwelling on the property, it is connected to electricity, has an eating area, a bath, bathroom area and a kitchen, and shower and toilet in that property at the time of purchase. I've tracked down several of the, the previous owners going back to nineteen, uh, late nineteen nineties, um, and I'm advised that the property was leased prior to my purchase by the previous owners. That date when that lease lapsed is unknown because I couldn't trace down one of the owners during that time. Um, electrical works were completed in two, year two thousand, so an upgrade to the switchboard and the electrical works in the house. Uh, a smart meter was installed in twenty thirteen into that property, it still remains there today, so it still is connected to electricity, it has a septic tank, um, those remain connected today. I, I received a rates notice from one of the owners dating back in two thousand, where a garbage charge had been applied to that property and has continued to this very day. Um, my plan was to clean up the property, repair it to be able to be leased or used to house farm workers as a part of attracting and retaining workers to work on the agricultural property. Um, the, the actual dwelling has, uh, been used by existing farm workers for cribbing, uh, meals, toilets and wash up, so it has been used to some extent. Um, currently, the farm business employs two people, and that will increase as the production, uh, um, increases. It's proving difficult to, to, uh, attract and retain farm workers because the first thing they ask you is, is there a house on the property I could live on as part of the, uh, um, coming to work for you? Obviously tending to cattle and sheep during calving and birthing, and also for the security of the property with shedding of equipment, it's, it's much better to have people living at the property. Um, so when cleaning up around the house back in October twenty eighteen, I was burning some cypress trees and some blackberries. Unfortunately, part of the house caught fire, and the excavator I had there ripped half of the back of the house off, rending that, uh, the house is now, um, not, not livable. Uh, my intent is to, uh, apply for a permit to demolish the house, build a new dwelling in its location, uh, in, to try, use that to attract and maintain farm workers to work on the property, and increase jobs in the agriculture sector in Latrobe City. So, uh, my final point, if I may, um, so I therefore urge the council to approve this application on the basis that the proposed dwelling is replacing an existing dwelling. Uh, the existing dwelling has been partly demolished due to a fire in twenty eighteen. Uh, it has electricity connected still, has a smart meter installed, it has a septic tank, there's a history of leasing at the property, has been rated with a garbage charge since two thousand, year two thousand, probably longer.
You've got fire to go, Sue?
Yeah, I'm there. And the proposed dwelling will attract and, uh, allow us to attract and maintain farm workers working in Latrobe region.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions for Steve? Course you could do it to him.
No, the, it was a funny, funny day, there's a story to it.
I'm sure there is.
I was, I was driving past and my wife said that, I think the house is on fire, and I said garbage, that's the fire of the cypress trees, and as we got closer, the house was on fire. So the excavator driver said, I won't tell you what he said, but, uh, he got in his excavator and started ripping the bit that was on fire, and he said, you want me to keep going? And I said, no.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Okay.
No other questions?
No other questions, you're right, you're free. Councillors, we now, after exactly one hour, move on to the business of the evening. Uh, very quick, the first item, uh, is not, uh, item nine, notices of motion, and we have a motion nine point one, um, put forward by councillor Harryman, timber release plan. So councillor Harryman, it is on the screen, and you're moving that?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Uh, with one slight adjustment, Mr Mayor, sorry. Um, on point B, uh, where it says there's been no discussion with local industries and councils, on the original one, it actually said there'd been no discussion with council, we've added local industry in there as well.
Okay, now, council officers, the governance team, have you picked that up?
They've already changed it.
They've changed it, thank you, okay. So you're looking for somebody to second that motion? Okay, moved councillor Harryman, seconded councillor Howe, is there any opposition, councillors? No opposition? Do you wish to speak, councillor Harryman?
I suppose I better, Mr Mayor, I did have a long speech prepared, and I thought I better put it in the bin because I could get myself in trouble if I, if I read it out. Um, so I'll just speak off the cuff.
Oh, sorry, apologies.
Obviously not a supporter of the timber industry, Mr Mayor. Um, councillors, you will remember at the last council meeting, we, we put forward a notice of motion that you all supported, um, calling on the government to release its timber release plan, which is normally a five year plan, and to also look at spending the hundred and ten million that's been sitting in an account somewhere for two years, uh, to create new plantations, hardwood plantations for the timber industry. Um, what has been released, councillors, is that five hundred and fifty hectares, I'll start at point A. Um, number one, the five hundred and fifty hectares of land that had been used two years ago was leased to a local timber company. Um, they were then told, and this council actually put a proposal in, that Treasury re-leased that land to them once they'd harvested. Treasury made the point that it would, they were looking at returning that land to agricultural purposes, lo and behold, two years later, it's gone back to plantation timber. Um, so none of the, none of the money which was put aside for new plant, hardwood plantations or new plantations has actually been spent in a new plantation area. They've taken five hundred and fifty hectares of pine plantation, softwood plantation, removed it and cost us local jobs and cost us local investment, and two years later, the government's gone in and just put their hardwood in there. Um, point B, there's been no discussion with local industry and council in relation to this. I've talked over, talked to, talked to a number of contractors who are involved in harvesting, I've talked to, uh, companies that provide private plantations and commercial plantations, and none of them had had any discussion with the state government over this. From my understanding, there's been no discussion with local plantation companies who have an idea of where to plant trees to get the best results, where the best trees are to be planted, and I know in this, just as an aside, what we're short of in the hardwood area is silver tops. Yet what we're planting is blue gums. So this will be of no benefit to those timber mills and those contractors that are struggling to get hardwood to meet the demand they've got. Point C, the proposed area is five hundred hectares in total, yet the government is proposing to remove five thousand hectares from area available in the native timber industry. Our biggest concern is, they're giving us five hundred and fifty hectares of blue gum, that's great, except it's not on new plantation, but they're going to be taking away five thousand hectares of high value timber. What we're talking about is silver tops again, we're also talking Mount Nash, and that is the problem. And my time's up, Mr Mayor, I'd better sit down.
Beautifully timed. Thank you councillor Harryman, councillor Howe?
Oh, nothing, Dad, Mr Mayor.
Okay.
Not quite, but I'll, I'll keep going.
Councillors, there has been no opposition, but does any other councillor wish to speak? No, councillor White?
Just very briefly, Mr Mayor, I rise in support of the, uh, of the proposed resolution, uh, put forward by councillor Harryman. I think that, uh, it is critically important that we not, uh, let the state government off the hook on this issue, and, um, and the reality of it is that whilst there's five hundred and fifty hectares, uh, been, uh, uh, if you like, approved, the, 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 the challenge is, and the really, the need for having a conversation with the state government is to get that additional allocation, and of course identifying where that allocation should be situated within, uh, particularly our municipality, and, uh, and also in terms of the, uh, if you like, the traffic routes that are going to be needed in relation to getting the material, uh, the, the timber to the ultimate destination for processing. And so I think that anything we can do, and this is a good start, to be able to really stimulate the government to be prepared to come and have a conversation with us, and to be able to identify, uh, the, the long term plan, strategy, that really is going to mean that we've got the resource that we really need to ensure that not only the viability of the businesses who are involved in the timber game, but also of course the jobs that go with it, and the jobs are the critical issue for me, that we really need to make sure that we do not, uh, do not let up in regard to the, uh, the, the effort and intensity that we have in relation to this council in regard to job creation.
Thank you councillor White, any other councillor wish to speak? councillor Clancy.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, I, I also stand in support of this, uh, motion that councillor Harryman has put forth, but I, I think it would be remiss of me if I didn't, um, say what, what I, I feel is a little bit, um, sits uneasy with me when we make broad statements. I think we should hold the, the government to accountable on, on things that, that affect our community and our industries and, and employment in this area, and I think that it's great that we write to the premier and the minister in this area, but sweeping statements like there has been no discussion with local industries, and I actually trust councillor Harryman knows the industry better than most of the other councillors in the room when it comes to timber, and he has said that he, uh, has spoken to a number of contractors, but I, I, I just think that it is dangerous when we start saying that there's, there's been no discussion with industry or council. There might not have been, uh, but it's, we've just got to be careful when we start writing to people and saying you haven't done your job when they may have done their job and we're unaware of it. Uh, but as a, as a whole, I think that this is a, a good motion, and I commend councillor Harryman for putting it forward.
Thank you councillor Clancy, any other councillor wish to speak?
Mr Mayor, if I may, I'm, I'm really happy with that, I'm just wondering if I may, is it, am I able?
You are able to close, and you can cover everything in your clothes.
I was just going to say, am I able to actually, um, put an amendment in? Am I able to amend the words of no discussion to maybe?
Minimal discussion.
Minimal discussion, yeah.
A bit late, a bit late to do it, but if all councillors are comfortable with that change.
Another councillor could propose it.
Um, I'm quite, I'm quite happy to amend if all councillors are close. Uh, happy with that, everybody comfortable? We're up, we will take it that the motion has been amended and we're still speaking to this slightly amended motion. Little, yes, yeah, yeah. So councillors, any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor Harryman, do you wish to close?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, I'll get to point D. Biggest problem we've got, and as councillor White pointed out, and, and as, as councillor Clancy has mentioned, this is all about jobs. Um, if every business could only run knowing that they'd have income for one year, most businesses wouldn't invest. When we're talking about the timber release plan, it's normally for five years, and to give you an idea, a harvester costs a contractor between seven hundred and fifty thousand and a million dollars, that's one piece of equipment. They're trying to get loans to renew that equipment, and they've got one years to go to the bank and say, I can make, I've got one years' work for this piece of equipment, when they normally spread it out over four or five. It's very, been very hard for them to keep contractors, to keep workers on as well, knowing they've only got one years of work, a lot of them are actually looking to get out of the industry. What it brings back is memories of Tasmania. Tasmania once had one of the biggest timber industries in the world, um, after, uh, having their timber areas locked up, which is similar to what's happening here, where we start getting five thousand hectares removed here and, and native forests locked up, you know, elsewhere, their timber industry actually got to the stage that's actually smaller than that of Gippsland. In fact, I think Wellington and Latrobe City's timber industry put together at one stage was bigger than Tasmania's. That is scary, and that's something we don't want to have, have happen here. So what we're asking is that the timber release plan, that we get it for five years. I know the government's come out and said they want a modernised timber plan, the Victorian timber industry is one of the most modern in the world. The practices we have in place with FSC, which is, uh, uh, guarantee of, of, a control with harvesting, quality of control and looking after animals, is one of the toughest in the world, and is in fact, you always know it's a good sign, they say flattery is always a, imitation's a good form of flattery. A lot of timber coming out of, uh, other countries has fake FSC from Australia put on it to say it meets our qualifications with it doesn't. Just in closing, Mr Mayor, people go, why do we need the timber industry? At the moment, there's builders in Melbourne bringing in houses made out of timber in package form from Austria. Why aren't we building them here? There's a whole new industry that we could have here if we looked after the timber industry. That's why I find it really disappointing that timber release plan has only been released for one year, not five, and hasn't given certain to the industry, and has even getting having a huge impact on not only Latrobe City but the whole of Gippsland. And again, when we're trying to build jobs, and this is an industry that the rest of the world sees as a twenty-first century building material, Finland's just put up an eighty-five metre tall all timber construction. The Queensland government is actually putting in a cross laminated plant, they've actually spent a hundred and thirty million dollars building a new government building that is all timber, yet in Victoria, again, we're bowing down to certain people from inner city Melbourne, um, and handing over rural jobs. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harryman. I used my non-existent merril prerogative to allow the slight amendment there, I'm going to do it again, uh, if the governance team could just note that the ministerial name is misspelt, we'll change that. Thank you.
Ministerial.
Minister's name is misspelt, yeah.
Oh, Jacqueline, yep.
I thank councillor White for noting that. Councillors, there was no opposition, but we had many speakers, so I'll ask you to vote, councillor White, or first of all those in favour, councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harryman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy and myself, I did that without looking because you all said you were in favour. I would have been in trouble if somebody changed direction. Item, next item is item ten point one, more power plant heritage interpretation plan. I believe councillors, there is an alternative motion, I take it you're moving that councillor Gibson?
Yes, please.
Councillor Gibson moving the alternative motion, which is now on the screen. Do I have a second, uh? councillor Law, thank you, do I have any opposition? Do I have any councillor wish to speak? If not? If not, I'll declare that carried unanimously. We move on to item 10.2, which is notice a motion response, options for englobo land. And again, councillors, we have a foreshadowed motion. I take it that you're moving that, councillor?
Happy to move, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second for that? Sorry, I said foreshadowed. We have a foreshadowed motion following. This is a, what do you call it, an alternate motion, yes. So councillor Harriman has moved. Do we have a second for...
Yes, second.
Thank you. I apologize, councillor White. Councillor Law was waving vigorously at the other end there. Yes, you've got to be quick. Any opposition, councillors? Yes, I had actually done it for you. Thank you. Foreshadowed, depended on the outcome of this motion, I take it, yes. Okay, we have no opposition, councillors. Councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I know we're going to have a late meeting, and I do ask the indulgence of my fellow councillors just to explain what we are doing. Currently, we have a number of englobo properties, which is basically farmland or non-residential land that has been, had a permit put over the top of it to turn it into residential land. Sometimes that has occurred on land that may not have wanted it to happen, as happened in a couple of our developments, but has had the vast majority support of land overs in that area. There's been a couple of cases where it has affected farmland. And the word that has caused a lot of the problem is land is rated on its potential. So if we have farmland or commercial land that is rated as, was rated as farmland, and we change it through englobo to residential land, it means the rates go up dramatically, which means even though that land may not be available for development for five, 10, and in some cases 15, 20 years, we are still rating it, not because we want to, but because we have to under state government law, and this is a state government wording that's caused these issues, we have to rate it at the residential rate. What this seeks to do is redress an imbalance that has occurred, where we've had a number of properties that are farmers have been unable to make all their rates. They're then charged an interest rate of 10% on what is outstanding. So while they're paying more for their land than what is reasonable because they can't develop it, they're then slugged with a 10% charge on it. What this basically aims to do, in the minute 19 I've got left, is save for those businesses which, or those properties, englobo properties, that meet the conditions in there, which there is not a lot, that their owed rent, their owed interest rate is dropped to zero, and moving forward, they're charged at CPI. It means any other land that is hit with this issue moving forward, that meets the criteria, can be discussed at one council meeting a year. So they'd all come forward, and we can look at it. Now, this isn't to go on forever. If, just cutting through the gobbledygook, it basically says that it will happen until a review of the rating system by the state government is completed, or I believe it comes back to council, or ownership of the property is sold or otherwise transferred in part or in whole. So if the farmland is sold to a developer, or partly sold to a developer, the interest rates go back to where they've been set by council, and payment is expected straight away. But if what happens is that the land continues to be farmed until such time as the government report comes back, or those other criteria are hit, or one-year period, then it comes back to council. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, ran out of time.
Very close. Thanks, councillor Harriman. Councillor Law, do you wish to speak?
Thank you. Just follow on from councillor Harriman. What's critical about this is that the valuer general actually sets the rates. So council does not have the opportunity to alter any rating structure or overlays that are on that land. So from a simple point of view, the only thing that we can do to help our farmers is look at the interest rates, and this is what we're trying to do, is help those genuine people that have owned land for a long period of time that has a zoning put across their land to increase it to residential, is that we can give them some relief under genuine conditions so that they can still farm, and at some point in time, the loan, the land then can revert to its next cause, which will be residential at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Law. Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor White, you look like you do.
I'm trying to restrain it. Perhaps if I can ask a question, would it be, and I'm sorry to, probably should have asked this earlier on, waves interest on the overdue balance of rates, do you think we should be saying of rates there to be absolutely clear that what we're on about here? That was my first point.
I'll get the CEO to answer that for you.
Whether it's, it would make it a little bit more clear if on the, when we start off the the council waves interest on the overdue balance of rates. And I think of rates would help, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that would provide some additional clarity. It is in relation to englobo land, so...
Are you suggesting an amendment? Again, I'm quite happy this early into it to allow you to change. Just, it's a matter of clarifying the English if you wish to do so. Councillors, you all comfortable with that? Change it as suggested by councillor White? Now, councillor White, did you wish to speak?
Well, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I think that this is a very good proposition that we have before us here to try and, as councillor Harriman and as councillor Law did indicate, this is really about, if you like, providing a framework within which those properties that are affected by changing circumstances because of the growth of the municipality and rezoning, et cetera, that goes on, that those who have been involved in a particular way of life, that they've got, in terms, in this case, farming, that they've got some framework within which they can understand how the future is going to unfold, and how they need to be able to sort of, well, give them the opportunity to plan for the future under a particular, as I said, set of criteria that'll mean that they've got some heads up, if you like, and so they've got a plan to, or got an opportunity to be able to consider their futures.
Thank you, councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak? Close, councillor Harriman? All right, on that basis, although we have no opposition, excuse me, we have had speakers, so I'll ask you to vote for councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, O'Callaghan, Clancy, carried unanimously. Thank you. For the galleries, for the benefit of the gallery, you might be finding some confusion about what's happening, and it's going to continue to happen for another couple of items. When a matter is put before council, a report is given by council officers, and they make a recommendation, which forms the basis of the motion that goes before council for consideration. If councillors have a different view, they move an alternate motion, and that alternate motion gets preference. And that's what's been happening for the first couple of items, and will continue to happen, it's my understanding, for another few. An other form of motion is if there is some supplementary business relating to the motion that has just been considered. Councillors are able to foreshadow an additional motion, and that is what has happened here again. And so councillor Harriman, you have foreshadowed and you're moving...
Happy to move, Mr. Mayor.
Moving a motion which is, should be on the screen behind me, if I make a submission. Yes, that's it there.
Not stealing your thunder, councillor Gibson. I just have a question before we have a mover and a second.
That is your right.
The question I have is, and on the modelling that was provided to us in the report, is if, in the foreshadowed motion, the increasing of rates options to local government will alleviate the rates burden in englobo land, use for farming purposes, if it wasn't for farming purposes, as it is written in brackets, what would the impact be to council on that? If I could just ask that question, if we looked at all englobo land properties rather than just the farming-purposed properties?
We'll throw that one to the CEO. Do you wish to throw on?
I think we might have to take that one on notice. We did do some modelling, it was only in relation to farms, and I think, yeah, my general manager of corporate services isn't able to provide that information readily, so something would have to take on notice.
Councillor Clancy, we aren't able to provide you with that information on the spot. We can do it on notice, but where does that leave you in relation to this situation?
I might just alter that foreshadowed motion if I could, Mr. Mayor.
And you would alter it by taking out the bracket section?
I think so. Yep, that'd be fine, Mr. Mayor.
All right. As the motion is still at just the moved state, you are able to do that. So councillor Clancy, sorry, councillor Harriman has moved that motion that is on the screen behind me. Do we have a second? Councillor Gibson is seconding the motion. Do we have any opposition, councillors? No opposition. On that basis, I'll ask councillor Harriman to speak. Do you wish to speak?
Just quickly again, Mr. Mayor, just to explain what this is about. There's a Victorian local government rating review on at the minute. Basically, what we're asking in here is for the government to make sure that the issues we're having with englobo land and the impact it's having on some of our rate payers is fixable, if that makes sense. There's three points. Give us more options so that rather than having to not charge rates, we can actually come up with a solution to it ourselves, rather than having to go to that and work on delaying rating from potential to actual, expanding the current exemptions and concessions arrangements. Because at the moment, we're only allowed to have a four-times differential between the lowest rate and the highest rate, which means if we do as we currently do and give a reduction to our farmers, then unfortunately, we can only charge so much for derelict buildings, and by only having that four times, it means we couldn't actually lower the rates on englobo land, which could have solved this problem without everyone having to listen to me babble on and such a rigmarole of a notice, an alternate motion before. What it'll basically do is allow us to actually make the changes so that we can do the best thing by our rate payers. That's basically what this is about. It's actually making officers make a referral on those grounds to the state government and say, 'Let us be fairer to our rate payers.' Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you.
Okay, declining to speak. Any other councillor wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor White.
Yeah, just on this one, I, again, I'm supporting this particular motion, and I think the other point that perhaps will be able to be captured in this process of the local government rating review, rating system review, is this idea that, which is current with the government of the day, and I think it's probably from both irrespective of which side of politics is involved, that there's this idea that land will be valued on its potential value, and rather than what it is, what its value is at this particular moment in time. And I think that this is an issue that really needs to be confronted as well in regard to the various options that could be contemplated. Because obviously, we've got this issue for us at this council, but it's not something that's peculiar to us. I think this is an issue that features right across many parts of regional Victoria. And I think that if we can show a bit of leadership here in that regard, I think that that's a good thing. But as I said, my point is that the requirement for valuers to assess values based on potential value rather than actual value at this particular moment in time is something that really needs to be taken on board.
Thanks, councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak? On that basis, do you wish to close, councillor Harriman? Getting close. Okay. All right, councillors, we have no one opposed, but we've had speakers. So again, could I ask those voting for to indicate? Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy, and that carried unanimously. We'll move on to item 10, 10.3. This item follows a request, a previous motion requesting some information be provided. And in this case, we have another alternate motion. I believe you're removing the alternate, councillor Gibson?
Yes, please.
Can I ask you, is the alternate motion behind me? Gallery can see it?
The gallery can't actually see all of it.
Right, good, thank you. Do I have a second for this motion? Someone to second the motion, please? On that basis, the motion lapses for want of a second, which in that case, we would move Mr. CEO back to the recommendation. The recommendation, can we change to the original recommendation? Is that it? That's it. Okay, I'll have to read it myself, mate. Okay, effectively, this motion is the original one proposed by the officers, and effectively requests that council note the report, which is in the agenda. So do I have a mover? Are you moving it, councillor Gibson? Unusual. Do I have somebody to second? Come on, we can't do this all night.
For sake of debate, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to see...
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Councillors, do I have any opposition? No opposition. I'll ask you, do you wish to speak, councillor Gibson?
Just shortly, or just quickly. Look, I would like the other motion put up. I take it why different ones don't wish to have it up, but it's just giving people the information. They can look at the figures, and they can deem what they wish out of it. They can say one's got more than others. You can also look at regional actual census that are built. So it depends which way you wish to read it.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Harriman? Any other councillor wish to speak?
Yeah, just quickly, Mr. Mayor, just touching on what councillor Gibson said. There's a lot of regional developments happening at the moment. We don't want to get them confused with what's getting done in each town. See, we've got in Mooy, we're going to have a regional cricket of excellence. In Moore, we're going to have a regional football of excellence and a soccer of excellence. We're getting built a mountain bike path. We're getting, in Traugan, we're going to get a regional aquatic centre and performing arts centre, along with a training centre. What's important is that we're getting these facilities that's going to make us a place where people want to live, and it's going to enrich our lives as well. I'm on the motorsport complex committee. I'm an eastward councillor. I'm wanting to get it built in the preferred location, it's between Mooy and Mooy. It's a tens of millions-dollar project, because it's best for what Latrobe City is. I think moving forward, we really need to try and get behind these, because we won't get this funding if we fight among ourselves. If Traugan was trying to get this funding, we wouldn't get it. We wouldn't have a swimming pool coming ahead, or the art centre. So just bear that in mind, people, when we're asking for these sort of things. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor Howe. There's applause from...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councillor White, you'd like to speak, certainly.
Mr. Mayor, I suppose, just briefly, being one of the original settlers of this council, I'm conscious of the journey that this council's been on over all those years. And we've come a long way as a council, I have to tell you, to be where we are today, and the way in which we operate as a council, and the way we operate as Latrobe City, so far as our communities are concerned. And certainly in those early days, there was a lot of tribalism, if you want to call it that. And certainly in those early days, there was a lot of tribalism, if you want to call it that. And we've had to, over that journey and through the good efforts of a... Many people within our community have been prepared to step up to the plate, to be councillors, to help try on behalf of the community, take us on the journey going forward. And so, in line with the comments made by councillor Howe, we've really got to understand that this is a dynamic situation that this Latrobe City operates within. And we've got to, in terms of going forward, be looking at the merits of each particular project or where we want to invest our funds on behalf of the community in a very proactive and constructive way. And we've been able to get through, or, you know, there has been a bit of pain and suffering along the way in that journey. And, but, you know, today, we're in a good space, I believe. And so, what am I really trying to say is that, you look at all the figures that have been presented in this document here and the array of matters that we've addressed as a council. It's impressive and it's been diverse. But it's made a difference within our community. And it's because we've been able to, as a group, constructively work together, particularly this council that we have part of right now, to be able to get there. And so, I think we've got to see it in that context. This is where we've been, but we've got to keep looking ahead at where we're going and do it as a team.
Thanks councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, I'll ask councillor Gibson, do you wish to close?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do agree with my fellow councillor. In the past, it has been quite interesting being on council, but we have come a long way. I also take note with what my fellow councillor said about regional centres, which is what I was saying when I first spoke. Whether it be in whatever town, we only get one bite at that cherry. We were lucky enough to get the cricket over in Mooy. We've got the mountain bike park coming in New Borough. So you can only have one of those in the towns in our municipality. And so if you look at it like that, you can understand the figures a lot more. If you go back 10 years before that, it would have been different again. So it's a snapshot, that's all it is. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Although there are no opposition, there have been speakers, so can I ask you to vote those in favour? councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, Harryman, O'Callaghan, Clancy, carried unanimously. Move on to item 14.1. Consideration of the planning panel recommendations from amendment C105 to Latrobe Planning Scheme entitled Live Work Latrobe. You have a recommendation in the agenda, plus I have an alternate motion.
Mr Mayor, I was just wondering if, we've been going two and a half hours, if councillors would like to take a break and maybe gather in the councillor lounge to have a little discussion? Two and a half, hour and a half? My maths isn't the best.
I'm sure the gallery would like a break if you wish to raise an item in relation to the agenda. Certainly, we'll take a five minute break.
That'd be great. Thank you, Mr Mayor. We meet in the councillor lounge?
Members of the gallery, we will resume the meeting. In the interests of transparency, I will explain that the councillors all wanted another look at the map of the Yonard South area to understand that they were, or they had a full understanding of what had been put to us today. So it was just a matter of clarifying some issues, we'll move on. We are at item 14.1, which is consideration of the planning panel recommendations for Amendment C105 to the Latrobe Planning Scheme, when we've entitled Live Work Latrobe. There is in the agenda, a motion as recommended by the officers, and there is to be proposed tonight an alternate motion, which actually adds some detail and cleanses it up. So do I have a mover of either motion? councillor McFarlane, you're moving the alternate motion, I believe. The alternate motion is the one behind me, I take it? Yes?
Second.
You're second?
Sorry.
Yes, councillor White? Second? Oh, sorry councillor Gibson. I'll make it up to you, you can move the next one.[758.14][758.14](Laughter). Okay. Do I have any opposition? No opposition on that basis. Councillor McFarlane, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Live Work Latrobe has been an all encompassing housing, industrial and employment and rural land use strategy that has now been developed over the last four years. In fact, developed before this current, or started to be developed before this current council came into play. So I'm certainly only familiar with the last couple of years of it, though there are a few around the table that have been there for the whole run. If I can just perhaps step through the process, Mr Mayor. As I said, the strategies were developed over a number of years, culminating in the exhibition of Amendment C105 late last year. The exhibition of the amendment brought a lot of community interest, to which council were very pleased to sit down with those concerned and consider the concerns. As a result of that process, we altered the proposal to consider most of those factors. The one issue that was of great concern to the community was the Yonard South Rural Living Zone.
I'd like to pause councillor McFarlane, we'll find the source of this noise and have it removed.[855.28][855.28](Laughter). Continue councillor McFarlane.
So as a result of the Yonard South concerns, the proposal was adjusted before it went to planning panel to pretty much pick up those concerns. And there was a number of other factors, as we might recall, that were considered in that, which included a bushfire assessment to allow some other zonings to take place. I'm certainly satisfied in the process that council has gone through, that we fairly took into consideration those concerns of our community. And at the end of the day, the planning umpire, the planning panel, they then came into being to assess what we put to them and to give some direction forward. And I think the only issue, other than a few administrative processes, and I might point out the earlier error in the Geraldeng Yonard South issue, whilst it was an error, and I think we were all apologetic that that occurred, the planning panel did acknowledge that in the process. So when the planning panel has considered the amendment, the only part of that that they've asked us to change is that issue relative to the Jeanette Street Industrial Precinct. And I think we've acknowledged through this report and the recommendation that we're satisfied to go with the planning panel's recommendations, which will allow us to progress the amendment. However, just very briefly, it's been a long process, it's been really large, complex, but I think we've come to a good finality. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McFarlane.[981.63][981.63](Laughter). Oh, give him another three minutes, okay, no. He was almost on time. Councillor White?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to take firstly the opportunity to acknowledge the work of the staff of this organisation for their efforts over a protracted period of time that has enabled us to get to this particular point that we're at this evening. As councillor McFarlane did say, this particular process has got a, it's been a long gestation period, if you want to call it that. But it's been a very important process for this municipality in terms of looking at the long term future and what it is that we want to see going forward as far as the future of this municipality is concerned, and how our Latrobe Planning Scheme might reflect that. And so on page 162 of our report tonight, we have, was it five dot points that I think are very important to mention? They are that this particular amendment proposes to ensure that the right locations for new and varied housing types for immediate and long term population housing needs, to provide appropriately located land for new and transitioning industries, to support current and emerging rural industry investment, to leave, in terms of leveraging the strategic advantages of Latrobe city's built-in natural assets to enable investment in new employment sectors and aid economic diversification, and to promote collaborative action for the provision of essential services and the infrastructure to sustain immediate and long term growth. And I think that this is what this document does achieve. And there has been a huge amount of community consultation, as you can see, the process that was followed, which is demonstrated on page, bottom of page 161, quite a comprehensive process to ensure that we did, as a council, have lengthy engagement with our community to try and capture the essence of the aspirations of the community, and to be able to have that reflected in the document that we have come to before us tonight. In so far as the, some concerns that were raised by Mr and Mrs Walker this evening, it's, I've been able to, or we've been able to establish that there has been a planning permit from this council approved for a five lot subdivision, and on their particular property that they're concerned about. Once they've gone through the process of obtaining the titles for the particular lots that have been identified, that lots two and five, two to five, will be subject of a planning scheme amendment process in their planning scheme to have them then identified as a rural living zone, like lots, that's lots two through to five. And also, of course, the other thing I just wanted to mention too, for the sake of the gallery, is that we've had a written response to this council in terms of advice from DLP that says that they will support this outcome in the event.
Excuse me councillor, would somebody like to move an extension?
So moved.
Moved, councillor Kellygan, seconded councillor Gibson, no opposition. Carrie, you have another three minutes.
Oh, I'm not sure that I'm going to need three minutes, but it is important to make sure that, well, every effort's been undertaken by the administration of this organisation, and I think also it's fair to say that this council, as a group, a collective, has been on a mission to ensure that the document that we have here does capture the, as I said before, the aspirations and the forward thinking that's required as far as the future of this important regional city, Latrobe City, going into the long term future. And it's really all about quality of life, it's about recreational facilities, it's about, most importantly, the jobs, 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 that we're always on about to make sure that we become more diverse, with more diverse than what it is that we have on offer here as far as job is concerned, and being able to, be able to take advantage of opportunities for those new kinds of industries and commerce that are going to be coming potentially our way into the future. And so it's, in closing, I just wanted to really take, make the point that this has not been an easy task, and there's been a dedicated committed staff of this organisation, Mr Mayor, who I'm sure you'll agree, have been tenacious in regard to achieving this particular outcome that we've got before us tonight.
Thank you councillor White, I certainly agree. Would any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Having been on the original councillor task force working group with, now from memory, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Whites, myself, were you on it? No, councillor Cam, and another one, this has been a really long journey. And while we're doing further work looking at bushfire overlay, because there are issues with some of our residents with bushfire affected lots, and what they can and can't do, it has been a long process that I'm really glad that it's come to fruition the way it has. I think we have tried to dot all the i's and cross the t's and put our, our community in a, in a position where they know what the rules are, they know what to do, and now we shouldn't keep being slugged at VCAT. So we had to put the body of work in, it has taken many years, but we are at an end, and hopefully this is now putting Latrobe City in a much better place. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Clancy?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to, I support the motion as it sits, and I'd like to congratulate the people who have been involved in this. When we think about being one of the most diverse but dynamic regional cities in Victoria, we think about how do we get there and how do we go into the future? You have to plan, and that's, the word is planning, this is a, this is a planning scheme amendment. And the planning has started well before I was on council, and as councillor McFarlane has said, we're lucky enough to be here as this comes to fruition. But it should be mentioned that the councillors who were previously involved who set this in motion, and the councillors who sit on this current council have done a truckload of work to get us to where we are. There's the community input in all the sessions that we've held, the feedback, the changes that have been made, the sessions on one on one, the constant emails that the planners would have been getting to get us where we are. We need to thank the community for their involvement as well, they actually make this planning scheme what it is by their input, because it affects them, it affects their backyard, it affects their, where they live and where they go forward. And, and as the other councillors have already mentioned, to the officers who have been living and breathing and sleeping this, you know, I say congratulations to you, because this does plan Latrobe City into the future, it puts us in a good place to be the most dynamic regional city in Victoria, and I thank you for that, and so I support this motion.
Thanks councillor Clancy. Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor McFarlane, would you like to close?
Just briefly, Mr Mayor, I think it's all been said, but this has been a huge project, I must add, it's come at a huge cost, but we're now in a position where we can move forward. We've considered our community, I believe, very adequately, and what we now propose sets the scene for the future. So the proposed motion incorporates the word, submits the amendment to the Minister for Planning for approval, and let's, let's move forward. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor McFarlane. There has been no opposition but many speakers, so I'll ask you to vote those in favour. Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor Kellygan, councillor Clancy, carried unanimously. We move on to item 14.2, another planning scheme amendment, this time C92, consideration of submissions around the Latrobe Valley Regional Airport issues. There is a recommendation from the officers, and I noticed there is also a proposed alternate moved by, moved by councillor McFarlane. Movement at the station. Councillor Gibson, yes. Words passed around, it's getting more boring. We have a mover and a seconded councillors, do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor McFarlane, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Amendment C92, which revolves around the Latrobe Regional Airport, was formally exhibited in late 2017. And whilst the next step in the process is to a panel, given we've been through talking to objectors etc, given the master plan is up for review next year, it's proposed that council expediently undertake an economic analysis and request an extension of time from the planning minister so that that information can be updated. It's essential to have some planning controls around our airport to guide its future growth, and therefore we need to undertake these works expediently to allow that process to happen. However, there's no value in us going to a planning permit without us having up to date information. And what this alternative motion encompasses, in addition to requesting extension of time from the minister, is to get that information up to date so that we're then in a position to move to a planning panel. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to support this alternate motion, because we've had many different submissions over the future, over the past about our, our airport. Without doing this properly, it's a waste of time, because any development, if you don't have the right controls in place...
Sorry.
It's all right.
Explosions always worry me.
That's all right. So without the proper controls put in place, any potential business opportunity at the airport is at risk. So I'm very happy to move this so it can all be put into place properly. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Does any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor McFarlane, would you like to close?
Only briefly, Mr Mayor, in that our airport is a valuable asset that we have, we need to ensure that its future is guaranteed and its development will form some process as developed. And what this, this amendment is about is putting some boundaries around that future development. However, we need to get it right, and we need to go through this process expediently, which is really the issue we're talking about here. We don't want it to linger on for another 12 months or two years, we want to get some action over the next four to six months, as we're advised, the timeline might be appropriate for, and then we can move forward. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Whilst there was no opposition, there were speakers, so I'll ask you to vote those in favour. Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor Kellygan, councillor Clancy, carried unanimously. We move on to item 14.3, which is the Gipsland Logistics Precinct, the GLP, and corrections amendment, corrections to the proposal, authorisation of planning scheme amendment C101. We're certainly knocking them over tonight. This is the first item on the agenda, councillors, that does not have an alternative.[1773.83][1773.83](Laughter).
On that basis, I'm happy to move, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, move councillor, seconded councillor McFarlane, any opposition? Okay, councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak? Okay. Councillor McFarlane, do you wish to speak? Any other councillor wish to speak? Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, I suppose I must offer you, councillor Harriman, do you wish to close?
No, I think Mr Mayor.
Okay, no speakers, no opposition. That one is unanimous. Thank you councillors. We move on to 14.4, the use of land for animal keeping, 12 dogs, brackets in retrospect, and development of kennels associated with animal keeping at 16 Tambo Road, Moi South. You've had speakers on this item. Councillors, there are no alternate motions, so you're considering the motion which, or the recommendation which is in the agenda, and which is behind me. Councillor Gibson, I notice you. I did say I would give you a first go next time.
No worries. Moving the recommendation, please.
Moving the recommendation. Do I have a second for the recommendation? Councillor Law, thank you. Any opposition councillors? There being no opposition, would you like to speak councillor Gibson?
Just briefly, Mr Mayor, I note some of the, the points that were brought up, but I also note what the council officers have written in the report, which is a little bit different. I bring your attention to noise. On page 288, the last stop point with the noise assessments, the report did however identify that although the peak noise level was within EPA guidelines, there is an increase in the level of continuous background noise made by the 12 dogs, one of them. The history of the sites, there has been many, many complaints by the neighbours with what has been going down. I also note that the applicant did have 15 dogs for two to three litres in nine kennels. So, do the maths, 39s, 27, right. But now they've amended it to have 12 dogs with two to three litres in 12 kennels. So, do the maths, is 36. So, you've actually increased the number. So, if the residents were unhappy with the original, they would be more than unhappy with the amended motion. I could go on and on with this, this motion, but the council officers' report says it all.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Law, do you wish to speak?
Thank you. Yeah, just having listened to both sides of the story, and I'm just at a point where I think this is a rural living area that is beneficial to some quality housing and some residents in that area, and I think they've built their lifestyle around that, which encompasses that rural living zone. And I think the, probably, to raise the level of dogs in that area, I think would be an uncomfortable for those type of people that have built their lifestyle where they have. They've chosen to be there for a long period of time, and I think it's an unnecessary, would be unnecessary in this point of view. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Law. Does any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor Gibson, do you wish to close? Close. We have no opposition councillors, but we've had speakers, so I'll ask you to indicate those in favour. Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor Kellygan, councillor Clancy, carried unanimously. Move on to item 14.5, councillors. Page 347 of the agenda is the officer's recommendation, and I'm told there may be an alternate motion. So, we are going, I take it at this point that we have a mover for the recommendation?
I'll move the one that's in the agenda, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's right, okay.
Happy to second that one.
Okay. So, councillor Howe was moving, and that was councillor Clancy seconding, was it? Yep, okay. Do we have any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
I'll just speak briefly, Mr Mayor. The sign they're proposing is consistent with the objectives and the decision guidelines of the planning scheme, Activity Centre Zone, Schedule One. It's in a retail slash commercial area surrounded by large and electronic signs. There are other signs nearby, Country Target, Subway, KFC, Coles Express, Royal Exchange. There's a plethora of signs, similar, similar sorts, larger, smaller. The luminance levels are of standard for the, for Australia. The, there's 10 conditions listed there to ensure that it is done correctly, and I do believe that it's appropriate for a thriving, thriving regional capital city like Latrobe City.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Clancy.
You took the words out of my mouth councillor Howe, I think there is, yeah, that's right. There's, I think there is an expectation when we, when we pitch ourselves as a regional city, that, that we have all the, the facilities and all of the parts that go with being a regional city, and I think one of this sign, as it does fit with, with our planning scheme. And it also, no objections from Vic Roads as well. I noticed, as councillor Howe said, there was 10 conditions, and the things like, when, when people have concerns about signs on highways, they talk about flashing lights and those sort of things. The conditions are listed that they, they can't have any imagery at all that would be mistaken as traffic signals, or any, or any words that might seem as if it's a direction to turn left or any of those sort of things. So, the conditions are quite clear, no flashing lights, 30 seconds at the most for every image. It seems to be, it's done very, very well, it's a good application. The luminance at 7,000 lux during the day, it's brighter during the day than it is at night, where you sort of think, well, that's a bit strange, but it's dark at night, so it doesn't need to be as bright. So, everything that's been put in, it meets, meets the standard. The planning officers have gone through this, and then the recommendation is to approve this, this planning application.
Thank you councillor Clancy. I'm sure the press have noted your statement that it's dark at night. Councillors, any, does any other councillor wish to speak on this matter? No, in that case, I'll ask councillor Howe to close.
Oh, happy to, Mr Mayor.
Okay. No opposition but speakers, so I'll have to ask you, those in favour, councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, I take your raise, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor Kellygan, councillor Clancy, okay, that's carried unanimously. Move on to item 14.6.
Questions, please.
Certainly, question.
Right. Thank you, Mr Mayor. A couple of questions, please. One, we hear, we heard about the fire on the, the property. Now, if that hadn't have occurred, could they or couldn't they have actually had existing use rights and had, whether they amended that dwelling or what, could they have done that? Please.
I'll refer that one to you, Mr CEO, or do you wish to bat it down to the back?
I just can't recall the exact details of the timing around that, but I think the general manager of city planning is grabbing, searching for the microphone, who might be able to help me with the response.
I think each of them are trying to avoid the microphone.
Yes, they are.
It's not on, it's not on Gale?
No.
Give it another shot.
Gale, it's not on!
[Laughter]
Searching for the right microphone. Come to the lectern if you like, Gale, if you can't reach that one.
Gale, if you'd like to come up to the lectern.
Is it on?
There we go.
Okay.
Would you like the question again?
Yes, please.
Oh, cool. All right. If the house hadn't have burnt down at all?
Caught fire.
Caught fire, sorry. Got pushed, yeah, backed over and all the rest of it. Could they have actually had, whether they extended that property, amended that property, could they then have actually had a, an existing use rights and occupied that property?
So, the answer is no. It's about being a habitable dwelling, and they have, have to have been living in that dwelling.
And, through you. Okay, so because there's not enough proof to show that there was people living there within two years, by, by everything we can't, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct, as per my previous response earlier.
One last one, please, Mr Mayor.
Yes, third question councillor.
Thank you. Okay, and is it also because of the, the lots, lot size? It's under 20 hectares.
Yes. It's under the minimum lot size, over 20 hectares, but under the minimum.
And if they joined two of the lots, then it'd be a different story?
That's question four.
Sorry, I added it to the question, so.
If I may, councillor Gibson. The dwelling size is essentially located between three different titles. So, to say that, if we're to consolidate, say, the vacant parcel, that's the west, and the parcel to the east, yes, that's possible, but that would require consolidation. That doesn't require a planning permit, but generally people don't consolidate titles that aren't actually adjoining. So, the answer to the question would be, is that there's also, as a right, development potential on the existing vacant parcel to the west of the existing dwelling site. Does that make sense?
Clear as mud.
Thank you. Councillors, the recommendation of the officers appears at page 287 of the agenda, and I have before me an alternate motion. Can I have an indication of which motion is to be moved?
Clancy.
Councillor Law, you're moving?
Yeah, alternate, thank you.
Moving the alternate. Okay, mover of the alternate. Now, do I have a second for the alternate motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McFarlane is the second. Now, so let me twist my neck again, is the alternate one behind me? That is correct, thank you very much for that. Any opposition councillors? Councillor Gibson is opposition. Right, on that basis, we will go to debate. Councillor Law.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In the development of C105, Live Work Latrobe, the policy and framework that was put in place was recommendations to better Latrobe City, and this is what we've tried to create. And the document we've created is a comprehensive document, but it also has some grey areas which are up what I would be for negotiation. And, and this is one of those grey areas that is up for negotiation, simply from the point of view that back from the early 1900s after the war, all these lots from Moi to Trapp were divided up under the war allotment scheme of about 120-odd acres all the way through. Now, this building that was on, put on this land would probably be around the 1930-ish type vintage. So, it has been there in existence for probably the best part of 85-odd years. So, to say that you can't replace a house that has been there for 85 years just is nonsensical, because it has been there for that period of time. And then to say that, oh, because it hasn't been occupied for two to three years, or a bit longer, does not make any sense, because it has been rated as a property with a house for the best part of 80 years. So, then all of a sudden we want to change it? I understand that it comes under the 20 hectare, but it abuts a residential zone. It, it has a sewerage system that runs through its property, it has power connected to that property, it has a water system supplied by Gipsland Water running through the property. Every service that is there to support a house is there under what we require. The, the difference with this one is, it's because it's existing. When, you're not asking to change the planning, or change the zoning, or anything like that, it's just purely to replace a, an old house with a new house. And that's all, all this is about. And I'm firmly of the belief that this should happen under these circumstances.
Thanks councillor Law. Councillor McFarlane, would you second it?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay. Speaker in opposition, councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It gives me no joy, all of this, but that's why I asked the officers the questions, because I was, I understand what councillor Law is saying, I understand what the speakers were saying. But the rules have also been in since 2000, that under 20 hectares, you're not allowed to put a dwelling. If unfortunately they had the documentation to show that it'd been continually lived in, not a problem, we wouldn't be having this conversation. They don't. Whether they can find it for the future, that would be good, but at the moment, we've just gone on about Live Work Latrobe. It's all against what we've just adopted. And two meetings ago, there was another planning permit in front of us, and it was 11 points X amount of hectares, lots per hectare. And I remember all the councillors who actually said, no, we cannot support it because it doesn't abide by Live Work Latrobe. And I'm sorry, this is what we're here with again. It doesn't abide by Live Work Latrobe. If they had the, the documentation, different story, but they don't have it. So, as I say, I, I feel for them, but we can't chop and change. If we're saying this is what we're going by, Live Work Latrobe, well, we have to do.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Any other speakers? For councillor Kellygan?
Question, Mr Mayor, if I may?
Question, yes.
Just point of clarification, when we had speakers earlier in the evening, there was an indication that there'd been rates lifted against the property. I think an indication from the officers what the nature of the rating was for that property, what the intent and purpose was, and whether or not there's been any reflected record of that. Apologies if I've missed something in the report, Mr Mayor, but just seeking some clarification.
I'll refer that to CEO, I think we might struggle tonight. Looking up there, fairly negative reaction from the two officers.
Without taking a short adjournment to look it up, Mr Mayor, I don't think we have the answer on hand, or have to take it on notice.
What, what lengths of time would we require to obtain that information?
Could I just make a note?
Yeah, it should be easily accessible on our computer systems, as a matter of being able to find that information. Aldo's here, who might be able to assist me, I do note.
Sorry councillor Law, you were making a point?
I could just add that the garbage truck goes one kilometre past their property towards Trafalgar and comes back and collects all the bins on the way back. So, I'd assume that that property has had its bins collected.
You made the point that it was fully serviced, yeah.
Yeah, it goes, goes down to my road, one and a half kilometres away, and then comes back again.
Councillors, are you up for a five-minute break? And we get this information. It's obviously fairly important to councillor Kellygan in making her decision. So, I apologise, Gallery, we're doing this a bit tonight, but I'll adjourn for five minutes while we obtain that information. The property in question under this item, the council officers have investigated, some consequential questions come out of that issue, but we start with the answer, please, Mr CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the property is rated as a, with a general residential rate and a garbage charge, also municipal charge and fire services levy. However, those charges apply effectively to properties that have a garbage service provided to them and for all their properties, unless you're a farm and you actually operate as a farm, then you would receive the farm differential. So that's how it applies. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's an existing use right in conversation with the general manager, because that's a different test. So this is actually about whether they, how they're rated in that sense. Not sure if you can add any more to that. Gal? Sorry.
No, that's correct. I mean, existing use rate, right. Existing use rights is not determined by how you're rated under the planning scheme, so...
Thank you. Councillor O'Callaghan, you have another question?
However, would it be fair to say, Mr CEO, that as an organisation, we determine to levy a rating against a property based on a determination of it being residential?
Through you, Mr Mayor. So effectively, that general residential rate applies to all land unless you, in Latrobe City, unless you're able to attract the farm rate, which is the one differential we do have. So that the land is owned as farming, I understand, but that rate applies to general residential rate. But we also have levied the garbage charge against the property, so that's the assessment that's been made. There must have been a garbage service provider that's continued to be charged to the property, regardless of whether the owner puts their bins out or not, and that's been, continued to have been paid against the property.
So final question, Mr Mayor. In the event that there was a property within Latrobe City that utilised our garbage services but wasn't rated in any other way, would they only be charged independently for the garbage service?
I'll put that question to CEO.
So, so no, a property would receive, in order to receive a garbage charge, would have to be paying another rate. So the, to qualify for the garbage charge, you need to be paying a general residential rate or another rate, and then have a garbage service.
How would it work for business?
I'll put that question to CEO, if you like.
Thank you, sir. So for a commercial business in, say, the city of Torregan, they would be paying normal rates, and then they would receive a garbage charge and provide a service to them.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor O'Callaghan. We were at the point where councillor Gibson had approached me with a question. Do you wish to ask that question?
Sorry. Okay, so you're now telling us that it was being rated as residential? Now, if it was rated as residential, and you're saying that it hasn't got existing rights even though it's rated residential?
Yes, I'm saying that on advice.
No worries. So what I thought had changed it actually hasn't changed a thing, is that what you're telling us?
That is what we're telling you, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, councillors, after the, oh, sorry, councillor Harriman, you have a question?
Mr Mayor, I haven't spoken for a while, so I thought it was about time. My question through you, Mr Mayor, because you're very knowledgeable or know people that have knowledge.
Or it is the local law, one of those?
It is the local law. Is, when we rated the property, did we rate it as its land value, or did we rate it as having improvements on it, i.e. a house?
Mr CEO, can you elaborate on that one?
That is a good question, Mr Mayor. I did look that up just briefly. There is a small differential between the capital improved value and the side values. It's only as a proportion, and we don't want to provide what the values are. It's somewhere around less than 10%. So in terms of the capital, the side values, sorry, an additional 10% provides the capital improved value, and it's a quantum of $40,000.
Another question, councillor Harriman?
Just along those lines, Mr Mayor. That will be a post-burning of the house. Do we have an idea of what we're rating it at pre-burning? Just to be a really pain, Mr Mayor, sorry, I can see that look of exasperation on your, I'm just thinking what we're rating it at before the fire.
From what I understand, the building was a very low quality house anyway, wasn't it? Yeah, yeah, so that might have reflected a very low value.
I did have a quick look, Mr Sir, over the last couple of years, and it didn't seem to have changed dramatically. So there was only a small differential between the side value and the capital improved value, which is, as indicated, might have been reflective of the condition of the capital improvements, as in the buildings and other components on the land that adds up to the capital improved value.
Okay, do you have a question councillor Gibson?
I do, all right. Just to cut through all of this, because I was thinking that, yes, there was a way forward, and, but you're absolutely telling me, even with this, it doesn't change it, it doesn't adhere to Live Work Latrobe, and we can't. Is that what we're being told?
So from, through you, Mr Mayor, from the response to the earlier question in relation to whether there is existing use rights, that response indicated that there weren't in terms of the fact that they were paying rates, and they would continue going to pay, there would be an ongoing commitment requirement for them to pay rates, that they are two separate matters. How the land is rated is based on the side value and any other capital improvement. So if there's a property that reaches the end of its life, that has no occupation, it would still be rated but for a very low value, which is what the rating system has indicated. And if a garbage service was provided, there would be a garbage charge, regardless of whether there's a bin presented or not, because the service is available to that property, is how the garbage charge works.
So it doesn't change anything?
It's basically the thrust of the argument. Thank you. Look, councillors, I'll just refresh your mind as to where we are. We've been down many paths on this one. The motion was, the motion was moved by councillor Law, who has spoken, seconded by councillor McFarlane, who declined to speak, opposed by councillor Gibson, who has spoken. Does any other councillor wish to speak?
Yes.
Councillor O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think, based on the information that's been provided, there's probably a few learnings from it. One, that our reports should include sufficient detail to inform a decision regarding its determination based on not only the letter of the law in terms of the planning application, but also around our intent around rating. And if our rating mechanisms are silent on intent of land usage and current purpose, then we should clarify that so that we can inform our decision-making in relation to that. I do believe, though, based on the information we have available, other than deferring the matter, which I'm extremely reluctant to do, it could reasonably be argued that the property is treated by Latrobe City as having current usage residential, and that that could be argued, and that we could be entering into the basis of some level of appeal based on the way we are treating this administratively in relation to our rating system. So on that basis, I think it is reasonable, and if applying the reasonable person test to this, to assume that without our rating system giving further clarification on the basis of prior use rights and entitlement, if we are levying a charge on the basis of a residential determination, that it can be reasonable to expect that that is a purpose and our intent in relation to that property. So on that basis, I would consider that to be a reasonable argument that's been put by the proponent. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor O'Callaghan. Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Clancy?
I'll have a crack too, Mr Mayor. Just, I do support the alternate motion that councillor Law's put up. There is a house on the property, there's been a house on the property for a number of years. The examples that councillor Gibson mentioned about Live Work Latrobe and how, going to our guidelines on that, I think that's something we should stick to. In that incident of when we were talking about that, we're talking about new properties, new houses built, it's greenfield land. I think that this example here that we have has a house on it already, and the owner's looking to put a house on it exactly where that house is. For me, much like councillor O'Callaghan has said, it's just a common sense approach.
Thank you councillor Clancy. Is there any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Howe?
Oh, I'm too involved with him, I suppose. I'm supporting councillor Gibson on this. Whether it has a bin pickup or not is irrelevant. Live Work Latrobe says that we can't do it, that is what our planning schemes build around. Existing use rights, if it hasn't been used in the last two years or two or three years, they cannot claim that. If we think that's wrong, well, then that's something we need to debate and change in the future. But right here, right now, where it stands is, we can't, we cannot support, well, I cannot support this. If there is a little bit of a grey area, I prefer to be on the safe side. So, yeah, that's where I stand on the matter.
Thanks, Clancy. Councillor Howe, just looking here, the only two councillors who haven't exercised their right, councillor White and councillor Harriman. Do either of you wish to speak? On that basis, councillors, we have, we've had speakers, and we do have an indication of opposition, so we'll have to put it to the vote. Oh, well, I'd forgotten to close, it's gone on so long. Councillor Law, would you like to close?
I was waiting.
You were waiting.
Every once in a while.
Grounds for appeal, I wasn't allowed to close.
This is just one of those situations where there is that little bit of a grey area, and it shows that this is a live and working document, this C105, and it has to be just massaged through certain areas, and I think this is one of those areas. That, look, this is just clear that, look, there's an existing house there, all he wants to do is build another house. The silly part about the whole process is that he could still get a building permit, he leaves one stump in the ground, and he can build a house as well. So it's, the only issue was that we actually wanted to demolish it and build a brand-new house without leaving one stump there. So, it's just, it's clearly that there'd been, like, garbage collection, everything's been happening, it's been rated that way, it's just, yeah, a house for a house, that's all it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Law. We'll put it to the vote now. Those in favour, please indicate. Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Law, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy. Those against? Councillor Gibson, councillor Harriman, sorry, councillor Howe and councillor Harriman. You cleared that close. Carried, night's too long, carried, thank you. Move on to 15.1, Latrobe City Sports and Entertainment Stadium Master Plan. There is, I was going to say, there is no alternative provided here. So, move to councillor McFarlane.
Second.
Seconded councillor White. Do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor McFarlane, you wish to speak?
Just briefly to explain, Mr Mayor, the Latrobe City Sports and Entertainment Centre on Crinigan Road has, over recent 12 months or so, had a project reference group to overview the $1.7 million development of the synthetic soccer pitch, which has just been completed. That project reference group consists of representatives of all the users of the reserve, plus their two ward councillors, two mall ward councillors. In the process of development of this synthetic pitch, a master plan has been prepared for the site, which is supported by the project reference group, which identifies future developments and allows us to put some boundaries around priorities into the future. The growth in demand for soccer grounds has identified an urgent need for upgrade of, well, more fields, which includes upgrade of ground lighting. well, more fields, which includes upgrade of ground lighting and the surface of the newly created field, which was just the surplus material from the synthetic pitch. This resolution, whilst it proposes to endorse the master plan, which will be a benefit in the future and particularly the Soccer Federation are about to use that plan in trying to seek some additional federal funds. So, it's going to be a document that's going to have a great benefit to us into the future. But it also supports the reallocation of $300,000 that we have in our budget, originally identified to support the upgrade to the grandstand. The lighting has become a key priority for that reference group and the user groups and this resolution will allow those funds to be redirected, to seek other supporting funds to ensure that lighting can be constructed. And recommendation three refers a small amount to our unallocated cash reserve process to enable the surface on the new ground to be tidied up to allow it usable as a soccer ground. So, I think this, again, takes our soccer process forward at Crinigan Road. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor McFarlane, great detail there. Councillor White.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Very briefly, I concur with all the comments made by councillor McFarlane and, of course, soccer is one of the most significant participation sports that we have within our municipality and this particular master plan really is critically important to ensure that we have the facilities available for our soccer fraternity to be able to take full advantage of. This is also identified, this locality has been identified as the regional centre of excellence for soccer and so I think that we ought to be supporting the recommendation in relation to the master plan and, of course, the $300,000 that was originally set aside for the, some works on the grandstand, to have that reallocated in order to enable extra sporting ground facilities to be of a standard that required. This, I think, is most important and so to have that as part of the resolution is, I think, very vital.
Thank you, councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak? No, on that basis, although there's no opposition, we have had speakers, so I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor, carried unanimously. Yes, okay. It's just been pointed out to me by the CEO that we need a motion to take the meeting past nine o'clock, but it is no longer, not nine o'clock yet and we've only got 17 items to go, so.
In the next three minutes, Mr Mayor. Just foreshadow the next three minutes where we might need a motion to move past nine o'clock.
I will allow you to move it now.
Thank you.
Councillor Clancy and councillor Harriman seconded? An extension of time to 9.30 or 10, is 10 more realistic?
10 is realistic.
10. No time required, I'm told. That voice is in my ear all the time, no time required. Is there any opposition, councillors? If not, I'll declare that carried unanimously. We'll move on to 15.2, Draft Recreation Reserves and Facilities Signage Policy. Had a bit of publicity and discussion around this over the last couple of months, councillors?
Moved.
Moved, councillor White. Councillor Howe will second. Any opposition? No opposition. Councillor White, do you wish to speak?
Self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory, declined to speak. Councillor Howe, do you wish to speak? Carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. 15.3, Caterick Crescent Reserve, Torregan, Proposed Removal of Vegetation.
I'll move that, please, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe, seconded by councillor Harriman. Opposition? No opposition. Councillor Howe?
Just briefly, as part of the redevelopment at the Torregan Sports Stadium, we need to remove four trees to make way for the new power substation for the kiosks, fire sprinkler tanks and underwater service lines. They have been inspected by our environmental team. They're not exotic, so we don't require it to have any permits or offsets. However, as part of the landscaping, once it is finished, there will be numerous trees and bushes planted in its place, so happy to move it.
Thank you, councillor Howe.
In the middle of our basketball stadium.
Okay. Councillor Harriman. Okay. Any other councillor wish to speak? On that basis, councillor Howe, do you wish to close? Okay. Councillor Howe, having spoken, we'll have to put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor, carried unanimously. Moving on to item 17.1, Annual Review of the Procurement Policy. Do I have a mover? Councillor McFarlane, thank you. Somebody to second?
Second.
Councillor White, thank you, councillor White. Do I have any opposition? Opposition from councillor Harriman. Just when you think you're in front. That's all right. Okay, councillor White. Oh, sorry, I've got to make, okay, right. Councillor McFarlane, would you like to open the batting?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is just an annual review of the procurement policy, which we've all had access to for a number of weeks now. I'm certainly satisfied that that review process has the appropriate parameters in place to allow our organisation to effectively get on with getting the goods. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McFarlane. Councillor White?
Reserved.
Reserved. Okay. Just to make it a bit different, all right.
Here we go, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Harriman.
Mr Mayor, my objection is based on, I was actually opposed the original procurement policy when it came up, simply on the grounds of the levels of quotations and approvals that are required and I'm just reiterating, I still have those issues. Obviously not going to stand in the way of seeing the procurement policy review put through, just again reiterating that the levels required for quotes and the levels of authorisation, I don't support. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Harriman. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And, did so, basically, because in the past I have stated that I wasn't happy with the levels of approval and I wasn't happy with only one actual quote and the paperwork. If you look at the amount and the written authorisation, as I state in the past, I was never happy with that.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor White, you reserved.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I am happy to support the councillor McFarlane in relation to this proposed resolution. The, obviously, procurement has been the subject of discussion at audit committee meetings of this council as well and I note that on the bottom of page 515, that, talking about item 2323, purchasing cards, the proposal of purchasing cards as the preferred method for low-cost purchases, has been a bit of, some occasions in the past where minor items, minor value items have been, you know, you have a situation where an officer has got a problem that has to be dealt with now and sometimes the system hasn't been good enough to be able to sort of provide the opportunity for requisition to be created in the first place and having to be done after the event. And I think this idea of these purchasing cards will leave an audit trail that will enhance the process and, you know, other than that, I think that we've got a good system in place these days and certainly, I can assure you that our external audit committee maintains a very rigorous interest in this particular issue.
Thank you, councillor White. Councillor McFarlane.
Just closing briefly, Mr Mayor, and I appreciate councillor Harriman's comments, but I think if we look at the last 12 months since that change was tried, I suppose, and introduced, we've seen some success with it. And as councillor White has said, the audit committee certainly cast an eye on it and they're certainly happy with the authority levels that are in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Having had speakers for and against, councillors, we must vote. Those in favour? Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy and myself. Those against? Councillor Gibson, councillor Harriman. I declare the item 17.1 carried. Move on to 17.2, Proposed Bushfire Memorial at the Cligney Hall.
Happy to move, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Howe, you're moving. Do I have a second?
Happy to second.
Clancy to second it. Any opposition, councillors?
No opposition.
Yes, certainly, certainly.
And I apologise for this, but at the bottom of page 557 of my document that I had the other day, and I haven't checked to make sure that that typo has been corrected.
The governance officer is nodding vigorously and says that the typo has been corrected. Yes, we're trying to avoid plagues, thank you for that, councillor White. Okay. Councillor Howe, do you want to kick off?
This piece will be an arch made from carp hearts, tools and other bits and pieces that, it's been salvaged from the ashes of the Black Saturday bushfires. It has the full support of the TSDA, the Cligney Hall Committee and most of the locals out there. The locals are in fact dropping off the pieces that the sculpture will be made of, so the policy requires that any proposed memorial must demonstrate design merit and be original artwork. It also must have a clear association and strong significance to this location. It ticks all this box. It's getting made by a local artist who's received funding from Regional Victoria, so very happy to support it.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Councillor Clancy.
Thanks very much, Mr Mayor. Joe Caminiti is a good local artist and what, and as councillor Howe's just said, the funding's actually come, the funding doesn't come from Latrobe City, it comes from Regional Arts Victoria. As a regional artist, Joe's been funded to work with the community and worked with the community, she has. So, it's not a piece of art that's been imposed on the community, it's something that she's worked in collaboration with them, with their bits and pieces, that would be a sculpture made by the community with her as the leading artist. And being supported by the community, it's a really wonderful thing that people will be able to look into the future and it's fantastic that Latrobe City is supporting this going forward.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, would you like to close, councillor Howe?
No, thank you.
All right. Having had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy, carried unanimously. Right. The next item is 17.3, the Finance Report for March 2019. Or is it the quarter ended March 2019? Just a quarter, really?
Quarter in.
Yeah, quarter, quarter in, yeah, okay. All right, councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Harriman moving. Somebody to second?
Second.
Second, councillor White. Any opposition, councillors? Do you wish to speak, councillor Harriman? Okay, councillor White, do you wish to speak?
Only very briefly again, Mr Mayor, as always. As you can see, the income statement report forecasts a surplus result for the full financial year of 62.8 million, which is a favorable variance of 20.7. So, councillor McFarlane, there might be 40 grand there, so, anyway, but, so, I think that that really does send a good signal that, to the community, to our ratepayers, that the finances of this council are in good hands and that we're on track in terms of getting to the end of the financial year, which is fast approaching.
Thank you, councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak? No speakers. On that basis, councillor Harriman, do you wish to close? All right, having had speakers, I'll ask you to vote. Those in favour? Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, that's it, right, carried unanimously. Move on to item 17.4, Tabling of Assembly of Councillors' Records. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Gibson, thank you. Got to be quick round here. Somebody to-
Second.
Second, thanks, councillor White. Any opposition, councillors? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak? No. Councillor White, do you wish to, no. On that basis, I declare it carried unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to urgent business. Are there any items of urgent business that councillors wish to raise on the basis that there is no urgent business or you're not going to raise any urgent business? I now need a motion to move the, to close the meeting. Councillor Gibson, seconded. Councillor McFarlane. Any opposition? No. Either of you wish to speak? No, carried unanimously. Thank you for your stamina, members of the gallery. We now invite you to join us for a cup of tea and a biscuit. Oh, and goodbye for the lives.